I call the Maplewood City Council Work Session to order on Tuesday, May ninth. Mr. Reese, roll call please.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Foma.
Here.
Mayor Canapper.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Mayor Canapper, we have a forum.
Thank you. Alright, so we're going to skip item number three and go to item number four, Mr. Reese.
Yes, we have next, Board and Commission applicants can make their pitch to the council, and they will have up to ninety seconds to do so.
If you are joining us via Zoom, then please make sure to raise your hand and Mr. Reese will call upon you. And if you are joining us in the chambers, then you are welcome to step to the podium. And when you get to the podium, please make sure that you press the button as you talk.
We have a hand raised, and I'm going to call them. Yes, welcome to the Maplewood Council meeting.
Hi, is this me?
Yes.
Hello, hi, I'm Colleen Cunningham. I've applied to be a part of the Community Growth Fund. I'm a Ward one resident. I have lived in Maplewood since 2015 with my family. My husband and I have two children. The oldest is at the ECC, the youngest is two and a half. I've worked with nonprofits since 2007. I was the Executive Director of Missourians to Abolish the Death Penalty. And for the last thirteen years, I've worked at Equal Justice USA. We're a national nonprofit that works at the intersection of public health, race equity, and criminal justice reform to prevent violence and advocate for healing when it occurs. I'm passionate about race equity. I want to be involved in the work to keep Maplewood a great community for all of our residents. I love spreadsheets. I have experience with board development and most aspects of fundraising, and I'm hoping that I can be of service to this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, we have someone coming to the podium.
Yes.
Hey, hi, my name's Amber Shanter. First of all, I love spreadsheets too, so totally get you, girl. But I just wanted to say I've lived in, I've been coming to Maplewood as somebody from the Illinois side actually for years. Always wanted to live here. Finally was able to move here during COVID in 2020. So going on almost three years. Basically, I love being involved in my community, specifically applying for the Library Board, but I would be happy to be on any board. My background, I've helped out with the St. Clair County Fairgrounds over in the Illinois side. My family was actually, my grandpa was the president there, so I've kind of been on board, seen how they run. Specifically, my background and what I do today is IT. I'm product manager for an innovation hub, so working with data analytics, data science. And what I'd really like to bring to the page is kind of how do we look at data? How do we make decisions based on data? Looking at predictions, forecasting, so on and so forth, and trying to be smarter just about looking into the future and making sure that we're making data-driven decisions from a government slash board standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Grayward. I am a Maplewood resident as well as the owner of the Blue Duck. I'll be honest, never envisioned a scenario that I'd be applying to serve on a municipal commission, but after living and owning a business here for the past seven years, I'm compelled to find a way to take part in the community to make it a better place to live and work. I feel that I have the right set of skills, both as a resident and a business owner, to make a contribution to the SPD Commission. I have a strong passion for the Maplewood community and want to make a positive impact. Serving on this committee will give me the opportunity to work towards the betterment of the city by promoting local businesses and the economic development of the area. I feel more in tune with the inner workings will help foster networks with the local businesses and the community leaders alike. When we first moved here, we joked about everyone drinking the Kool-Aid because the love for Maplewood was everywhere. Didn't take long for us to take a sip of it. We love Maplewood. I'm so happy to be part of it, and I want to make a larger impact on growing it for the future. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Corinne Char, and I am putting my name in for the Library Board. And I have lived here about a year and a half now.
You have to keep holding it down.
Thank you. I'm the mother of a two-year-old here, and I think what really encouraged me to apply for the library is just seeing all of the things at the state level that are going on to defund libraries, to criminalize and ban books, and wanting to find some way to participate in my local community in a way to kind of fight back against some of that state control. When my son was born, one of our goals was to go to every city, county, and municipal library. And we made, I think we got to thirty-eight of them. And so I feel like I'm fairly well-versed. We were usually at the library three or four times a week at various libraries around a lot of the early childhood programs. I think one of the things I've been most impressed with in the Maplewood library is the community outreach that's there in terms of, you know, undomiciled populations or individuals who are needing resources and its ability to connect them. And I'd love to see that continue to see adolescents continue to be a population service there. Because I think that's really unique to the Maplewood library and not something that I'm seeing at a lot of the other municipal, county, or city branches. And ultimately, I just love that it is a municipal library, that it is independent from some of the bigger systems, and that that just allows kind of an extra degree of ability to navigate these kind of state and federal issues. And I just, I'm glad to know that I am among spreadsheet lovers and that that is getting their full due tonight. So third one in for the data sheets.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Ricky Buato. I live in Ward two. I've been a Maplewood resident since 2021, so two-year anniversary is actually next week. And I have a, I'm applying for the Parks and Rec Commission to work with the Parks and Rec Commission. My undergraduate degree is in Parks and Recreation from Missouri State University. Out of college and during college, I worked with three different cities, the city of Olivet, the city of O'Fallon, and the city of Springfield, Missouri. I spent five years in Springfield during and after college, working with their ice rink down there. It's an eight-million-dollar facility with a two-million-dollar park with a million-dollar water feature as well. Managed that for multiple years. I'm still incredibly engaged in Parks and Recreation currently play and multiple sports and weekend warrior tournaments and adult leagues throughout the St. Louis community. I have a passion for Parks and Recreation. I've seen what it's done for my life, for my family and my child's life, and see it's an important part of the community and continue to build on the great community that we have here in Maplewood.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to call on some folks here online. Ms. Norton, welcome to the Maplewood City Council meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I have applied to serve on the Maplewood Community Growth Fund Board. I've been a resident of Maplewood my whole life, graduating from the MRH School District and ultimately building a career there as the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent and the Secretary to the Board of Education. I have worked for MRH for eighteen years, and during that time I have been fortunate to serve as the Program Administrator for the Weekend on Wheels Food Pantry, where we have provided weekly food support services for participating families. In addition to my work with the MRH School District, I have also held leadership roles with several local nonprofit organizations, including service as an Associate Director with a nonprofit professional dance company known as BKDP or Consuming Kinetics Dance Company, where we emphasize access and inclusivity in our mission to share movement as a healing and health-focused art form. I've served as a Board Director with Untethered Planet, a nonprofit with a mission of keeping textile waste out of Orlando. And in what seems like a very distant past now, I've served several years as a Program Administrator for Joe's Place. Because I spent my time at MRH working in the central office, I learned to look at opportunities and challenges with a lens that considers the long-reaching outcomes for everyone in the organization and the broader community. However, because of my role as an Administrative Assistant in the central office, I also have the skillset to drill down into the same opportunities and challenges to help map out finite logistics for moving forward in a very detailed manner. I'm highly organized. I work very well with others. And I've been told that I ask good questions that help teams to think about the way decisions might affect those who are not present in the room. So that's me. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to apply and to introduce myself. And please know that if you find I'm not a fit, I would be glad to provide support and serve in other ways because I am passionate about creating and implementing accessible and inclusive support services in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another one here. Ms. Mueller, welcome to the Maplewood City Council meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Well, I have zero spreadsheet skills, but I am a connector. I am very, very good at making relationships. And I have a job, my job, my current job is working at St. Louis Community College, and I now train people how to work in mental health. So I would love to be a part of that community that brings together community and the police force and Maplewood and general into how to make healthy and safe spaces to live. And I have a lot of connections with agencies, and I just, I really sort of live in the I-know-a-guy space to help people stay connected and feel safe and happy and healthy, and that's what I love. And I'm a good part of a team, especially if somebody else has those spreadsheet skills. I can go out and do all the narrative parts. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Teresa. Sorry about that. Teresa Murphy. Hi, Jenna. I can tell you that Jenna is legit. I know her personally. I think I'm applying for Parks and Recreation, and I don't do spreadsheets as well. I'm, I work as a receptionist, and I have to do those all the time, and I, I, you know, I'm okay with them. But the reason I really want to get on the Parks and Recreation is because Maplewood is such a great community. And this is my year to get involved, and I could actually be in any of the councils. I feel like I'm ready to work. The reason I feel like Parks and Rec is where I want to go is because I am really into the pool here in Maplewood. I think there needs to be a lot of help and work done to make it a lot better and safer place for the community. And as a former lifeguard and pool manager and swimming and diving coach, I think I have the skills that really can go up and make it a fun place for families, make the inclusion there like something, and make people feel welcome. And even though I'm thinking about that, I think that, sure, you're more, please, you know, consider me. And hopefully, we can do great work together. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffin, welcome to the Maplewood City Council meeting.
Hello. My name is Lisa Griffin, and I applied for the Design Review Board and the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm an architect, and I've lived in Maplewood for about two years now. Moved here straight after college. And I'd like to be part of this board on a technical level because I know my way around our code and our ordinances, and I know how to find different guidelines in that capacity. I also know my way around a set of design documents and construction documents. And, but more importantly, I'd like to be part of this board because I see our building stock in Maplewood as a sort of physical timeline, really, that kind of reflects our culture and our lifestyles and how those things have changed throughout our history. And I think it's really important to celebrate that historical significance that we have in the city and then within the region as a whole. But I think it's equally important to help support our current residents and business owners in undertaking different projects that they're looking to do right now. I think that can serve as a continuation of this physical timeline that we can see for future generations. I professionally work on a team every day, so I'm great with working with other people and cooperating. And I think I could be a really great fit for this role, so thank you for considering me, and I look forward to hearing back from you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
I am Martin Brenner. I'm actually currently on the Library Board and advocating myself for reinstatement. I'm currently the Vice President of the Board, and traditionally move into the President role in the subsequent year. And we just passed our bond issue, and I'd like to be able to be reinstated to continue to help allocate those funds in the proper way.
Thank you.
My name's Cynthia Boxerman. I'm a recent resident to Maplewood in Ward two, and I'd like to be on the Sustainability Board. I am an attorney. I have some experience in environmental law. In 2020, I left my husband and moved to Chicago at the age of fifty-nine to pursue a degree in environmental science and sustainability. I graduated last year from Loyola, and I am currently in the process of forming a nonprofit that helps other nonprofits and municipalities conduct their operations more sustainably.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, anyone else on the line?
There are no more hands.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in chambers? I think we got everybody. Okay. All right then, item number five.
Yes, council questions of the applicants?
All right, here and then, y'all. Item numbers, you got any? Okay, item number six, please.
Sure. Review and discuss applications for boards and commissions and make recommendations for appointment to the mayor. And let me just remind the council that there are two spreadsheets that we have for you. And anyone who has applied up until this work section is eligible for consideration.
It may be buried in a packet somewhere. Do we have how many of what's available and what handy anywhere? So like, are there two on the Library Board and one we don't?
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
Vacancies?
Just the number of vacancies.
Oh.
Usually two. Our Commissioner Board.
I have, I brought all my packets. I'll bear with me for a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've got it. I think I've, I think I've got what you're asking for. Yeah.
One of the vacancies.
Do you want me to read them or hand this to you? Just looking for them?
So like, how many vacancies? In other words, how many positions do we fill? Or make an estimation that we have two, actually we have two positions. Like, for example, for example, I left a designer move. We had at least one seat open.
So will we add capacity, though? Like, I guess, are we, will we add capacity not including that? Or is it a situation where like, there were three people on last year, but we've got four people now, and they all seem awesome. So do we put all four on a board? Do we cap it? I don't know.
Let me throw this ranch in there, too. Sometimes, I know. So, yes, anyways, and for my colleagues on council and also for the community, I would like for me to know that even though someone may put number, let's say they put Sustainability Commission as their first choice, but they tell me they love spreadsheets. They tell me they love data. I'm going to ask them to look at another commission that needs that. So just to kind of let y'all know, I take your recommendation seriously, but I'm also looking at what I think a commission may need. And I can tell you right now, Human Services needs somebody that loves spreadsheets and data.
Just, I'm sorry. Look, I'll put, that memo I gave you sets forth.
Make sure that's like, if there's four names, okay, we have four holes, or there.
Correct.
Doesn't, that's what I mean. There could be another hole somewhere else because there's already a vacancy.
Right, so, 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 yeah, the way, the way that this memo is set up to you, really, you have, I'm looking, okay, so for everyone, I'm looking at Board of Adjustment, Housing Board of Appeals, right? All right, so then we have three seats where we have three people that have reached their term. They, it is not a requirement that they are reappointed. They have to submit an application again if they want to be reappointed. So we have these folks to consider, and then we also have the alternate. So you could look at it like there's four seats available or three seats available, depending on the commission.
And plan and zoning, sure. And one more, plan and zoning, which is on page two of that memo. There are two members who would have expired, but Donna Rakowsky resigned, so we have a third. Again, as a reminder, this is an opportunity for you all to give your feedback to the mayor. And then on May, May the twenty-third, which is two weeks from tonight, she will provide her nominations for the actual Boarding Commission members, and then there will be a vote for the respective Boarding Commission members.
I will just add, since it was my own seat on the Design Review Board, and we have architects who have applied, but I feel like it's my due diligence to say, please make sure we get an architect on Design and Review.
It's happening, saying.
Getting trouble for my old friends.
You know what? I got a call from your old friend, too. We had coffee, so it's happening.
Mr. Reese, can you also remind us the number of positions on the Community Growth Fund Board?
Yes, it is, it is four. And there are ten, ten who applied total.
No. So technically, no. But afterwards, yes.
I'm sorry, I can't find the memo. Can someone just read off what commissions have what spots so I can make a note on some paper?
Thank you.
Board of Adjustment, Housing Board of Appeals, there's four or three and an alternate, excuse me. I'll say it that way. Civil Service, three. Design and Review and Historic Preservation, one. Human Services, three. Library Board, four. Oh, perfect. Parks and Rec, three. Planning and Zoning, three. Special SPD, three, and Sustainability, two. And I was just trying to do the puzzle at this point because it's like, I'm thinking, like, if we take the people who rank Board of Adjustment Housing top, there's four of those. There's four holes. That eliminates three people who wanted Civil Services Commission. So that sort of, I mean, like, I think once we do the math, there's not a lot of recommending to do here. So I'm sort of at a loss.
You kind of got a, yeah, yes, I, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and break the ice here because I, I, I would definitely like, I just noticed that Jenny Schmidt had applied for the Civil Service Commission. And I think everybody knows her history with the city and her work with the city. I think she would be a fantastic addition to any other commission. So I highly recommend we consider Jenny Schmidt. I'm just sort of, these spreadsheet people out there, I'm in your tribe, so it's not, it's not so clear to like the spreadsheet.
I'll continue with this one, so I want to flow into some grad, I like the parking rec uh, stuff, so I'm just gonna recommend my new friend, uh, Ricky over there. Look at him.
And, and what I said was real too.
Just on kind of like, um, a humanities nerd alert moment, I really appreciate how much Lisa Griffin talked about what really is the idea of habitus with the, the Design and Review, so that was pretty cool and I liked that a lot.
As well, for you, um, say that, who, who did you recommend? Lisa Griffin?
I think I'd like to recommend Carmen Rayburn for the Special Business District, um, her being a business owner and also a resident brings a lot to the table and they have done some things already that I know of around the community, like give my son ice cream for being student of the week. So I think I would like to recommend her.
I'll second that. I'll just uh, run down my list of who I have so far that I would recommend. For uh, Board of Adjustment, um, Barry Greenberg and Patrick Shugo and Jenny Schmidt. Civil Services, uh, Patrick Hugo, uh, Jenny Schmidt and uh, Dennis Gorg. For Design and Review, uh, Barry Greenberg. Uh, Human Services Commission, uh, Ricky Buato. Library Board, Martin Brenner. For, right now. Parks and Rec. Uh, Laney and Ricky Buato. Planning and Zoning, um, right for right now, Pickett Lima and Brian Hobbs. SPD. Uh, Elisa Correll and Carmen Rayburn. And uh, for Sustainability, Cynthia Boxman. I don't think it's controversial, but I would second Martin Brenner, I think, with four leaving continuity, Library Board. Yeah, it'd be nice to see a majority of the board continue on with their. Yeah, yeah, a lot of money.
I'd like to recommend Pam Cunningham for the Community Growth Fund. Um, sounds like she has a lot of experience and can bring a lot to the table.
Yeah, definitely, I second that for sure.
And I'll add to that, uh, MCGF, uh, Jenna Mueller and Kat Norton too as well. As well as Colin. So many applicants, so many good ones.
Which is wonderful, which is wonderful.
Yeah, it's been a, I mean, I had to read through the applications two or three times. Uh, just, yeah, everybody's well-qualified, very interested in making Maplewood a better place and all that, so I was, I was pleasantly surprised, so it's very nice.
Anything for the council?
I, I'm just gonna echo a, a lot of what Sean said, there were some fantastic recommendations. Um, and I don't want to roll through, you know, the, the same ones he did, but pretty much everything that Sean said is, is pretty much spot on with what I'm looking at, so.
I don't want us to move on if we're not, if you all are not done. Okay, are we good, are we good on the left? Okay. All right, uh, I just want to let you all know that what I will do when, so we have to vote on each person that I seek to appoint. And when we go through the motion and we get to the discussion part, I'm going to explain to you why I am presenting that person to you all for appointment. So you all just don't think I just pulled something out of the air. I promise you, there's rhyme and reason to the appointments that I make. Um, and I just want to state again, uh, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop a name. Um, Colin Bassett asked to be on the Sustainability Commission, but I knew the work that he was doing involving uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion was needed on our plan and zoning. And so I reached out to him and said, I know you asked for Sustainability Commission, but would you please consider this and here's the reason why. And now we have him working sometimes, you know, as the leader of a subcommittee to crank out ordinances that affect our planning and zoning to help folks here. So I'm just letting you all know again, if, if there's someone that you recommended and they did, they don't get appointed to what they, what their number one is, but they get appointed to someone else, I'm gonna explain it to you, but there's a reason to it. All right, awesome, thank you. All right then, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the work session, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you. Thank y'all for joining.